All right, so what functions should the police perform? A relationship of trust and respect between law enforcement and the community must be based on a shared understanding of the functions each community wants its police to perform. The protests following the death of George Floyd have raised important questions about the appropriate role of the police, size of police departments, and resources devoted to policing. Some protesters have called for quote "defunding the police" unquote. In Minneapolis, where the death of Mr. Floyd occurred, a majority of city council members pledged to dismantle their police department and create a new public safety system for the city. Stakeholders in their communities have suggested adjusting the scope of responsibilities assigned to the police department and adjusting its budget correspondingly, shifting resources to social services, community programs, housing, and education to focus on crime reduction. All communities should be asking what goals they want their police department to accomplish. Meaningful reform will require honest and thoughtful discussion about these goals among local government leaders, law enforcement officials, and community members. All participants should recognize that funds are limited, that personnel must be trained and managed for the tasks they are given, and the organizational change is really swift. So the first question that I posed to Chief, and we can certainly respond and get involved, is how should the police and the community engage with one another?
So I'd like to say the town of Newcastle Police Department is a state-of-the-art professionally-staffed law enforcement department dedicated to providing optimal services for all town residents and those who visit or do business. Through comprehensive preventative measures, the department is continually vigilant in its efforts to maintain a lawful and peaceful atmosphere, thereby helping to facilitate a high-quality life for all residents and visitors. We strive to carry out that mission in a professional manner, respecting the rights of our citizens without regard to race, color, nationality, creed, gender, or sexual orientation. Our policies and procedures are developed and executed with that goal in mind. Our officers are selected, trained, and supervised to that end. And you know, our function or my belief of our police department is it's community-oriented and our value is service. So does anybody else have an opinion on what we do or should do or how we do it?
So I'll start it off and then kick it over, but we with the CRE, and Hermine, when I were in the same group and she was leading it, you know, the question, how should the police and the community engage with one another? And then the question below about what role the police currently play in your community, they're not exactly the same, but they're tied together. And there was questions and issues about how the police approached members of the community, you know, setting up something at our community today, but at the market on the weekends. So what is the role and how should people interact with one another, meaning law enforcement and regular citizens and visitors? So generally speaking, there don't want to be comments about that as opposed to something specific, although we can go into that too.
Yeah, so the "how" is a great question because what the chief just read is sort of like the statement of, you know, respecting people, the visitors, the communities, like the visitors, the people who live here, the people who do business here. So how do the cops do it? Like, what do they do? How functionally, really, when they come out of their vehicle or they interact or something? How? Do they demonstrate all of that acceptance, justice, respect? Is it eye contact? Is it their tone of voice? What is it that they do?
I think it all starts with, you know, training, right? It goes back to training and personnel selection. The officers that we've had in our FDO program and the pillars of what we teach and what Craig teaches to them and just seeing how we handle calls and interacting with the public. And you know, I can go into all, I have it down the road, but I could go into all the community policing measures that we do that help us engage with the public. It's almost impossible to explain what we do every day. It could be, you know, getting a coffee and talking to five people in a little store, you know.
That'd be a good example. I mean, that's kind of it, like discretionary things that they do. What are they doing?
I could provide a real-world example with something that happened to my family. And just for the record, while I'm the town prosecutor, I don't really work with the Newcastle Police Department because I don't really handle criminal matters. But just based on my observations as a resident, I see them patrolling, I see them in certain areas. I, at one point, turned right onto Roy Brook Road from 117 as I was going south. And there was an officer there and he checked my inspection ticket and said, inspection sticker and said, hey, your inspection is due next month. Make sure you get it done. But recently, we had an incident with my daughter where she was the target of a hate crime. And the detective who handled it, Detective Watts, was very professional. He met with my daughter and the other children involved, and he treated her like an adult, spoke to her the same way I'm assuming he would speak to an adult. They followed up, they found the perpetrator, they handed it off to the Westchester County DA's office. And I've heard of other instances where children have had issues, especially with cyberbullying now, which I think is probably one of the most important crimes going on right now in Newcastle is cyberbullying. And the way they've handled it all has been very professional. And so, and I worked with officers in New York County and other counties. And as a kid growing up, I was on the other side of policing as a young Hispanic kid growing up in a tough section of Brooklyn. And I think these guys do a great job. And I'm not here, I'm not a plant, I have nothing to gain. But I think if Newcastle PD could serve as a beacon for good policing, I've seen it personally, and it says a lot about, I think, the training that goes on and the leadership.
Yeah, if it's okay, I'd like to just interject for a second. Well, regarding the "how", I was assigned village posts in our town. So I'm down in the village area where the stores are. Every day, Monday through Friday, 7 to 3. If you need me, you can find me down there somewhere. On a daily basis, I see so many, I come across so many folks and I interact with so many, so many people. So many people that come down there know me, they see me every day, they're going into Starbucks and coffee, they're going to Villa Reivers to pick up a wrap, you know, they're gonna go down to Pizza Station to pick up a slice. And they see me and, you know, we speak. Some of you on the panel here, they met me down there and spoke to me. The same thing with the little store. How do we interact with the town folks? Sometimes even through a service call, call for service. Martha, I met you on a service call and I've seen you several times since, you know. I actually spoke to my wife about you. I mentioned you at home. You know, like I said, my father-in-law actually years ago, this has to do with that, was a pastor at that church where you are now. But, you know, through service calls, just walking down Greeley, we interact. And I've had the opportunity to meet so many folks and I see them on a daily basis. And it's, you know, it's like anything else. Hi, how you doing? Hi Jim, how are you? Officer Dogg, it's good to see you, you know. And that's what it is. And I'd have to tell you, I enjoy doing it. I've been doing it for almost a year now. Met a lot of people and, you know, I really appreciate that the chief gave me the opportunity to do it. But the answer to the "how", that's one way. That's one of the answers to "how".
I also, I've worked with Newcastle Police on a whole bunch of different stuff. And one of the things that I really appreciate is the consistency in the responders. So what I mean by that is it's the same people. We know them, we know who's coming to support us. And that really helps navigate different situations that are really complex because of the familiarity we have with the officers who are coming to support the district. And that consistency in response and longevity, I don't even know if this is accurate, Jim, so maybe you can articulate whether it is or not. I feel like there's a longevity in police officers in that you retain officers over a long period of time, which helps us develop relationships with the staff that's supporting us during the day. And so I look at our, maybe in a different way. The role of the Newcastle Police is intricate in supporting our school community in so many different ways, whether it's a security threat or an emotional threat or a difficult issue with a custody issue. Where I think being a part of, having a strong team downtown helps us serve our kids better and our families. And the ultimate, the ultimate trust in that relationship, I think, for not only the district but for the community was placing one of your officers at the high school every day. So.
I'm gonna jump in before we move it along. I think, and Hermine, maybe you can help and those who are on the CRE can help because I think we're moving away from the question a little bit. No one's disputing that the police, you know, Craig is doing a great job downtown. I don't think anyone's disputing that and doing many things right. The question may be, I as a white male have no issue engaging the police officers because it's, you know, it is what it is. I mean, it's called what it is. I don't have an issue. I don't have that background or concern or fear or nervousness or anxiety, right or wrong. And I remember one of our meetings, I don't recall which one it was, it may have been the CRE or a different meeting, but you know, how someone else may respond and how someone else may interact with the police. Well, that's the question, I think. How do you deal with people who come from a different background or different, you don't know what their experiences are, but how do you deal with people? And what are your thoughts on how we can make sure that everyone feels comfortable to have that interaction? That's my thought, and I think that's relevant, so.
I'd like to share, involve Martha in a share, if I may. Martha, please correct me with the timeframe. It must have been around the end of August or so, maybe early September. I was driving down 117 and there was a woman who, she was walking from Mount Kisco and she was obviously in some state of mental health distress. So she was first of all wearing a house slipper, walking with a limp. And I pulled over and, you know, inquired whether she was okay, et cetera. She was talking out loud to herself, cursing out loud to herself, and she said she was walking to Austin. So I then told her that that was not really possible. And I'm sitting there and I'm struggling, who do I call for help? So I called Martha. And I said to her, Martha, there is a woman walking down the street from, walking from Mount Kisco to Austin. I'm actually following her and I don't know who to call. So Martha then called someone with the ambulance, thinking that they can come and assess the person. And that was when we found out that you cannot call the ambulance for mental health relief without first going through the police. We discussed it for a while. The woman was a black woman. We discussed whether we wanted to involve the police and then we decided, well, we'll make a special request and have them come. And Martha called into the police and basically asked for them to show up with no sirens, no lights or anything. And I pulled, I stopped right at the entrance to First Congregational Church, the Orchard Street entrance. And the police came from the, not from the direction I expected him to come from. He must have taken the Roaring Brook exit, but he pulled up in the middle of the road with his lights on, with his lights flashing, rolled down his window, did not say a single word to me. Just, I would call it just glared at me through his window without asking what transpired, what we needed help with, where was the person? And then I started speaking, told him what happened. In the meantime, he's blocking traffic. There is a long line of traffic with his lights on, which he was specifically asked to not do. And then I pointed out the woman to him down the road, asking whether he would drive her to Austin. And he said, I'll see. He drove off, slowed down, said a couple of words to the woman, and literally three seconds later, he was on his way. Right? So all to say, our interactions with the police, I have had, personally, I've had more good interactions with the police than bad. But let's not pretend that we don't have things to address. So, I'm sorry, Martha, you look like you wanted to say something.
No, I was, thank you. Finish what you were gonna say, Hermine.
Well, I think I was leading into the next question, right? In terms of what is the role of the police, what does the police do? Do we really need the police to be involved in something like a mental health check or something of that nature? Let's just maybe expand the conversation into the amount of training that police officers receive. We cannot ask them to be social workers, marriage counselors, you know, mental health counselors. They are just not trained to do that. And even more directly to the example I gave, why is it that we cannot have a system in place to have a mental health check or have the ambulance or social worker discharged without involving the police? Do we think that what transpired in that example was appropriate at any level? Do we think the community was served? Do we think that this woman was helped? Do we think that I was treated with respect in this interaction? No, it's, none of those things occurred. So let's talk about what's the role of the police, what do we really want them to be doing?
So I think that in fact to Chief, to how we can help answer that question, and I don't mean to cut you off, but just to try to keep us controlled and not stay on focus, is what do we have? For example, as you seem to be noting, how can we provide mental health services in lieu of the police showing up? Should the police be showing up at all times when there's this type of a call that you just mentioned? And how can we deal with that locally? Is there something, probably maybe financially impossible, if you will, for every municipality to have that? But do we have resources, Chief, that we can tap into from the county in situations like that? How do you deal with these situations?
If we continue going through the guide, we'll get to that specific question again about mental health.
Yeah.
Chief, can I ask you something? I'm looking at the guide on page 10 and they outline four pillars of procedural justice. And I just wonder if you could comment on that.
We'll get to them as we go.
Okay, you haven't got there yet.
No, we got to go.
Okay, sorry.
I just want to add one other anecdotal story and it comes from my employee. And actually, the chief and I have had this conversation and he knows, and this was before he was the chief. Several years ago, one of the employees from the church came to me and said that he worked for both the temple and the church. And he said that when he would in the evening sometimes come back to the church from the temple because he had work he still needed to do, that he almost every time was stopped by the police and asked where he was going, you know, and all of that. And he is non-white and he was driving a black car with slightly tinted glasses. And I had, I asked him for his license plate and I went and met with the prior chief and I said, this is unacceptable. And he was not, never stopped after that. But the fact that he had been stopped almost every time he was driving on Bedford Road between the synagogue and the church is troublesome. And I don't know, had I not intervened, if that would have continued or not. But, you know, it just raises the issue of, you know, and maybe, you know, were he Caucasian? Maybe he would have been stopped maybe once, maybe he would have been stopped every time. Maybe it was because of his car, maybe it was the time of day, I don't know. But it's just, you know, it raises for me the question about, you know, how the police engage with the community particularly for people who are non-white. And how it's perceived, because this person was really scared when he came to me. And he said, you know, one of these times, you know, I think they're gonna, you decide, I always stay at the speed limit or under it, you know, I'm very careful, you know, and he was scared.
It almost like, it's a little deeper than, you know, how do we engage? It's kind of like, I'm trying to think of, trying to think of a little bit about the, what the police officer is experiencing and saying, you know, how is the police officer making a decision to pull over this person who's working in the community? We've defined him as a member of the community. He works here. He's seeing this and making this decision. What's happening that he's making this decision? And the same thing with Hermine's example. The police officer is making decisions constantly. He's looking at all this information, he's throwing his lights on. He's making these decisions. And what's really guiding those decisions? And you've talked about training, but training is good. It's how the individuals integrate the training or how they feel guided by it. And how information like these stories would be useful data for further guidance, discussion with the police officers about these things happen? What do we think about how we should do this better? This is not really what we want, but this is happening.
Let me suggest this for the sake of efficiency and working this the right way. And maybe going forward, because this is a learning process and how we're all going to interact and do this. Maybe since we know in advance what each section is that we're going to discuss, maybe we'll let the chief do his, go through his itemized issues that are addressed in the packet, in the material. And we should come or in advance, actually, have some questions that we could provide the chief so that he can address them as opposed to us that are all taking turns. The chief can have some answers and we can certainly respond to them, but that may be more productive. Does that sound reasonable?
Yes.
Because otherwise, it's just us shooting out, and I'm guilty of it too.
I'm not sure what we're supposed to do. Like, if we explore, we talk over things, are we then supposed to make proposals or have prototypes? Or is the chief's just supposed to answer us? And like, what is, how is this supposed to work?
So my, my understanding and how it would work, and certainly people could disagree because it's not set in stone, is we have, we're gonna identify the issues, we're going to all discuss the issues, and then we're gonna suggest how we can change those issues or deal with those issues. And their response may be, we can do that. Response may be, you can't do that because of civil service and dollars and just shooting out random things. But I think it'd be more productive going forward. We all know, now that we all have the packet and it can go look at it, we all know if we're gonna be discussing section one and two, these questions we can ask in advance. And just because Chief gives us an answer doesn't mean he's right or we have to agree. But at least we know where we are now. And then once we have those answers, we can then suggest or share our views.
Right. And if you take a look at the packet, there are places in this country and in Europe that are actually designing a protocol where if there's a familial dispute or if there's a person with some type of mental or psychological issue, they're not sending cops. They're sending professionals. They're sending mental health professionals with, not in a, in a police car with the sirens blaring. And it appears to be working because if you wanted to trade a police officer to be a police officer and a psychologist and a marital counselor, it's not gonna work. We'd have to spend a million dollars per person. They'd have to be in school for 20 years. So, but I think this, if we look at the manual that they've given us, I think they gave us a lot of good ideas and protocols that we could hopefully establish here. Jeremy, I have to respectfully disagree with you. I think that dialogue is what this is about, not us sending in advance questions to the chief or comments to the chief. I think it really, learning comes through dialogue. And, you know, he may say something in one of his presentations that I've read differently than what he's saying. And, you know, it just feels to me like it's not a a good way, that we shouldn't have to give our questions in beforehand.
I, it's not, it's my, the way I'm looking at it is it's not mutually exclusive. Meaning, just for efficiency purposes too, the chief can be prepared to engage in those conversations. And we can also be prepared because we know in advance, we prepared in advance and he's prepared in advance. So that means we can have just a much more efficient conversation. So I don't think it's mutually exclusive that you have to do one or the other. That dialogue is critical. 100% I agree with you. 100%. I'm just trying to move in the right direction.
I think it's important for us to go through the guide for sure, and I think questions are absolutely appropriate. But we also have to, you know, to go through the guide and move on. And after we go through it, there are gonna be areas that we identify that we want to address. And then, you know, after we finish the guide, I had a whole section or session just, my thought was set for identifying the problems, identifying what we think the problems are and solutions to it, so.
And we're not married to Chief's timeframe either because we have until April and I don't have it in front of me when we end, but I believe we ended in December or January, Chief?
Yeah, we did, but we built it.
We'll have time. We can certainly add more sessions to make sure we do have that dialogue.
Sorry, but the word "efficiency", and that may be a legal, a word that, it sounds to me like you're, I'm concerned that it's like, okay, we're gonna check the boxes. And by efficiency, we're gonna get through this. And, you know, we have to accomplish so much each session. And I think that, to me, that stops the conversation from happening. And it then becomes, okay, so we'll just accept that, let's move on. And I know that's not what you're saying, Jeremy, but that's how it feels to me, or that's how it sounds to me, that it's kind of like dismissive in a way, but that I know you don't mean it to be, but that's just what it feels like to me.
Certainly.
I'm sorry.
No, you don't have to apologize. I know, anyone who's saying anything here is coming from a good place, period.
Can I interject? I have a two-part question. Well, my question statement, the first statement I wanted to make was, Jeremy, when you asked the question about how everyone on this panel felt about police and relationships, you know, I think this is what it is when it's so deep enough that we don't even look around the room and read the room. Look around and see how many white people are on this panel. And look around and see how many black or BIPOC people are in this panel. From what I can see, I see, you know, our numbers are clearly less than the general population on this. So that was one statement I wanted to make. And then the other statement I wanted to make was, so we are all, so, you know, I just want to be fair. There are so many of us on this panel and here we are asking these questions to Chief Carroll. I wanted to turn it around and have him tell us what he expects for this to come about from this. Like, what did he feel that, you know, he's been given this? And is it like, does he agree with it? Like, what does he think? Does change need to happen? Is it working? Is it status quo? No change needs to happen? So I wanted to hear from him because all of us can sit and talk and, you know, talk about a lot of things which happen in this town or not happen or supposed to happen. But he's really the expert over here. And I wanted to ask him, what does he want? What does he expect to get out of this hole? Or is it just something which, you know, was given to him and, Chief, you've been told, let's work on this?
I think we do a really good job at Newcastle Police Department. And I think, but we're not perfect, right? And I think there's always areas for improvement. And I think if we can, you know, self-reflect and look at us honestly, that we will come up with some honest-to-goodness suggestions that will make our department better and help us provide service to the town. So that, I welcome the opportunity to be involved in this.
Can I just say one thing more? I think if, why don't we just look at the people, the BIPOC people on this committee and listen to... And listen to the experiences that they or their loved ones or their relatives, uh, have had. That's where the valuable information is going to come from. I don't have the same experience that they have. Um, but I certainly see a hesitance, if not a fear, of approaching the police for virtually minor, minor interactions. Um, I mean, uh, uh, there are people who won't even report a crime of their, on their person to the police department out of fear it may be turned on them. And there's a reason for that, and that's not to say that we don't have good people in our police department, I think we have a, a fairly good police department. But like Chief Carol said, there's always room for improvement, nobody's perfect. And I think we need to address those, um, relatively fewer instances, given the homogenous nature of our community. But just as important, because I expect our community to become a little bit more diverse moving forward with all of the changes that are coming, that, that will be expected. Um, we have made, um, on, on Cree, in the Policing and Emergency Services Committee, we have made several recommendations regarding, um, additions to the police training. Some, you know, may be easily more palatable than others. Um, we've been told that some of our recommendations will irk the unions, and again, I, I'm sorry I keep bringing that up, it's just that I feel like that seems to be a wall here. And I don't think we should be fearful of, you know, pushing what we think is really important, especially for sensitivity. I think that, um, I think Vince, it was you who mentioned these instances and how valuable these instances are in the overall training process. One of the recommendations that we had made was for, um, learning from these real instances. Um, and do some role-playing, utilizing them, because that could be invaluable for how people approach these types of situations that are not common in their everyday, um, policing experience.
So if, if I may interject for just a moment, so I'm not an expert on policing, and I'm not an expert on the BIPOC experience of policing in this community. Um, but I am a process consultant, so I'm going to step in for just a moment and say that, um, in terms of the process and the way that we sort of see this task force unfolding. Um, the police, the, the chief came to this particular session with a set of answers to the questions that are asked in the first section of the packet, right? Um, I think the thought was that he was going to provide those answers to this task force. And that the task force would then have the opportunity to react to that, right, and to say, you got it, and you hit the mark on this? Or there's something missing here, and here's what's missing from my perspective and from my own experience. Um, and so I think that, uh, what we should do is to kind of continue to move forward with that frame in mind, that the chief is going to tell you, this is the way I see the world. And you're going to have the opportunity to then reflect on that. And, and we're going to sort of trust one another to be open to the experience of being moved by what we hear here, and, and to changing the way in which we, you know, write, write out the responses to these questions, and I think part of where we're getting stuck is that we started with maybe the, the million-dollar question, which is how do the community and the police interact with each other, I mean, my goodness, we could spend six months of sessions talking about that one question, right? Um, but what I think I want to suggest is maybe if we, if we keep moving forward, my understanding of the way that the packet works and the questions that are in there is we get to a more sort of granular level of data as we continue to work through this, so maybe if we can say this was a sort of a, a good introduction, and I think the stories that we heard like really set the right tone and the right frame around the kinds of honest conversations we need to have with one another. But I'm going to suggest maybe we continue to move forward and, and keep asking those questions so that we can come back to this, if that makes sense.
So, I, I really appreciate what you said, Ivy, about process, because I've sort of been swimming in this like, what are we supposed to do, I don't understand what we're supposed to do. So if, if, to follow that process of the, the chief providing an answer to each of these questions, I, 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 I think then might there be an opportunity to ask the chief clarifying questions about his answer, so we like fill out and try and understand?
Not just the opportunity, the expectation that you will do so, the hope that
Okay, so then we could, we could ask more questions to understand more what the chief is saying.
A hundred percent.
And then that might generate the follow-up stuff.
I mean, what I thought was really interesting about, um, if, if I sort of rewind the, this conversation to about 15 or 20 minutes ago, you know, when the chief read his response, what I thought was really interesting was the first couple of people to react to that response, um, added something that I think was really missing, which was sort of the, the context of kind of small-town policing. So it kind of even goes beyond the notion of community policing, if you, you know, you know about what community policing looks like in New York City or a place like that, but you know, we immediately jumped to, well, what do you actually do here? I go have a conversation with five guys at Lang's, you know, Officer Davenport says, you know, I talked to so-and-so when they're going into Velaritas to get a rap, I mean, it's really like such small-town policing. But then there's the divide between the small-town policing as I experience it versus the small-town policing as Hermian experiences it, and are we having the same experience? Is she getting the same access to that small-town policing, um, sort of feeling that I'm, I'm having? Um, and so I think that's, that's kind of a critical question for us to continue to explore.
So chief Question number two, please.
Chief, we, we, what will the police play in the community? Do you want to, do you want to address any of the four bullets that are on page, uh, 12 underneath that?
Uh, what are the primary activities of officers in your community?
Uh, it's how often are the complaints made about the police, do particular units or assignments draw an outside share of complaints, do complaints
So I'll start with the first, what are primary activities of officers in your community, and their calls for service, our top five calls were public safety, medical aided calls, alarms, suspicious incident, and calls for service. So those are our top five. Next question I got was why are people calling 911? Uh, medical aided, accidents, 911 hang-ups, public safety being reported, uh, violation, you know, tree down, wire down, and, or domestics. That's the top five, there's 26 domestics, 210 medical cases. Uh, it says in what situations do you know, police self-initiate interventions in the community, and it should be done when observed. Um, then it said, how many complaints are made about police? 2020, we've had four, 2019, there were six, 2018, there were six, 2017, there were two, 2016, there were three, 11 of those 21 were, uh, self-initiated from within the department. Do particular units or assignments draw an outside share of complaints? No, uh, you know, we, we are, are we have a community relations unit, we have a traffic unit, detective unit, so that, that, that isn't the case. Um, and do they come from a particular portion or portions of the community? They don't. And what are the main complaints? That could be the officer was rude. Um, he was curt, or he issued a summons and they didn't think was warranted, I mean, that's, that's for the most part. Um, I did look up, I can get to it later. We had two use-of-force complaints in the last 10 years, and that was, uh, related to arrests. Um, any questions on those quick statistics or thoughts?
What does call for service mean?
It could be, um, you know, there's a, there's, there's a coyote in my yard. Um, it could be anything that people need help and call us for. Um, I think the next question is, should social service be deployed instead of redition to police? And, uh,
Chief, can I ask, I'm sorry, chief, can I ask one question? I, I just was not able to write quickly enough, um, as far as, I'm sorry about that, because I'm not looking at the answers. Um, you know, obviously, because you're, you're reciting them, um, the top calls for, the top five calls for service, and then the reason for the 911, I just want to be able to jot those down, but I, I just can't write that, that, that quickly.
Sure, it's medical aided, so regarding, um, a medical
Right, and that's for 911?
That's 911, yep.
Okay. Mm-hmm.
To report an accident.
Okay.
They dialed 911 accidentally. Uh, again, public safety, uh, it's a pothole, you know, a wire came down to my house, it could be anything like that.
Okay.
And then the last one was domestic incidents. Those are top five.
Okay, but that was also the same for the 911, you're saying, 911 and top five?
That, sorry, that was the 911, top five.
Right.
The previous call, calls for public
For service.
Medical call aided was two. Alarms were three. Suspicious incidents, four. And service calls, again, was five.
Okay, thank you.
I have a problem with this, how often are complaints made about the police? Because of black and colored people, people of color like brown, people don't like going with their complaints to the police, how do you think they're going to pick up the phone and complain about the police? You know, that, that's just one of my thoughts.
Well, I mean, I, I was just giving statistics of how we've
Yeah.
been called. Um, I do have an ideas for that, uh, that I've already considered going forward, and we can, we can get to that down the road.
Okay, thank you.
Um, term is, Hermian's question, should social services be deployed instead of redition? Uh, calls for service involving those in mental health crisis always include the possibility unknown dangers to the public and responding officers. The addition of trained social services personnel would always be considered beneficial and a welcome addition to responding police personnel. However, as response times are critical and no such program currently exists in the county or the town, this would, uh, require an addition of full-time social services personnel. The frequency with which NCPD is called in to deal with mental health issues is relatively low, does not support additional personnel. Uh, perhaps a better idea is creation of social service response team to operate throughout Westchester County and aid a small number of departments that may be unable to staff a full-time social service personnel. And I, in addition to that, you know, I, I think increased mental health training is always a, um, a good idea for us. I, I would add that, um, during COVID, we, um, developed, um, relationships with, uh, mental health services, and we actually have the ability to call, uh, a liaison, um, if need be, on a mental health crisis on the phone, when we're currently actively dealing with, um, somebody in crisis. So, um,
Chief, is, I'm sorry, is, is C-VAC a resource that you can use when it comes to, you know, a, a mental health crisis?
They really rely on us for that.
See the other way around, okay, that, that was my impression. Um, you know, a, a, a lot of places have a full-time paid ambulance that, that's part of a, a fire department. Um, in our town, uh, we have a volunteer fire department, we've got a volunteer ambulance. So we, we don't have the kind of staffing that you would have in more dense population centers. Um, so on the one hand, it's fabulous, because you know, we've got neighbors who are helping neighbors. But the downside of that is, is that they're not necessarily trained in the areas that, that we need them trained in. Um, you know, we, we, um, I, I'm curious through, through WEMS, which is Westchester, um, emergency services, so, so C-VAC, um, our, our local ambulance is, is a, a basic life support system, you know, you fall, you, you know, you, you have trouble getting up, you can call them, they'll come help, and if there's, um, a, a situation that requires uh, more specialized assistance, they call Westchester ambulance, and an EMT actually shows up at the scene, and the, our, our police accompany them as well. Um, does WEMS have any mental health training? Because let's face it, 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 I, I, I think it's so hard to to not consider mental health in general, you know, with, with, with the majority of calls, and I think that COVID has just put a tremendous strain on people. Um, so that, that the, the chances that you are walking into a, a mental health incident or, or crisis, or mental health plays some part of the call that you're, you know, responding to. It, it, it's got to be on everyone's radar.
You know, and without an order from a doctor, the officers are the ones who are making the decision as to whether the person is a, um, a danger to themselves or others, and then that's when they were taken into custody pursuant to the mental health law, public health law, and then, um, the, the ambulance corps would transport them with an officer, uh, onboard. But again, it is a difficult, uh, situation.
Chief, you said that the number of these are low, like, how, what are we talking about?
A handful a year?
Handful, yeah, six, something like that, maybe.
I, I can have that answer for
It's okay, it's okay, but what I'm, what I'm sort of getting at too, as a, as a social worker, um, I, there's two problems with it, it's, doesn't happen a lot. And dealing with mental health emergencies is something that even trained people, they practice. And when there's only six a year or so, even if you get trained, you got trained six months ago, and now you're walking into it, it's not like that's going to be at your fingertips, so it's, it's a tough nut when you only have um, so few of them. Uh, it's a tough one to, to, to try and tackle, and to put the police in the middle of it. That's a tough one, I, you know, I almost said what occurred to me, and like my wife will kill me for saying this, but it's almost like you need a volunteer social work department, you know, that you could like call, it's only six a year, like, how often are you going to call, but, uh, but there are a lot of mental health professionals who live in Chappaqua, for God's sake. So, um, it occurs to me that that could be useful.
You know, like, like Kimberly said earlier, we are, we wear a lot of hats. And, uh, and do a lot.
That actually might be one recommendation. Particularly for the, for this community, would be to invite the mental health professionals who are a part of the community, if they're willing, to be on a rotating list of, of assisting the police if they're ever called to do so. Um, you know, that might be one way, I don't know, chief, if that's something that's quote-unquote allowed uh, in, in the regulations, but it, it just seems like, you know, it, it might be helpful, uh, to be able to call someone like Vince, or someone like Victoria Goodman, or someone else who lives in the community who has, has the skill set. Um, it, you know, in the same way, chief, that I've gone, that I went with officers to do a death notification, uh, to be of help, you know, to the person who was getting that information. That might be another way to kind of have the community more involved in, uh, in the care of the community directly.
I, I think it's a great idea.
You know, the one issue about that, Martha, what I think of is because we're such a small community, you, I just hope that people would feel, my concern would be, do people feel comfortable sharing their mental health issues in the, in a moment of crises with someone who was in their community? Who they run into, or they may know, or they know people in common. Uh, and I, I trust that most people would respect the boundary, meaning mental health provider wouldn't share that interaction, right, with someone else?
Risk your license?
Right, 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 of course not, right.
Exactly.
Uh, but I, I just mean, you know, the reality of it is, everyone is, is so close, and, oh, did you hear about what happened down the street? Oh, Susan or Bill was there, Tom was there, whatever it may be, but I, I, the question I have is, would that person who's recipient of that help feel comfortable saying what's going on, knowing that even if everything is okay later on, in a week or a month, you can run into them at the Chico's?
So is it possible that maybe the hospital has, you know, mental health professionals that, that might be available to our police? We've got, um, Derek, um, Anderson, is it, who's coming in from, uh, uh, Northwell to, to speak with the board about COVID, but um, he's coming in, I think, on, uh, in the next couple of weeks, and maybe this is something that we can talk to them about, maybe this is the resource, as opposed to like one, separated like one level from the community. That they're still local and they're still able to respond, but it's not your next-door neighbor coming. You know what I mean?
We do have the liaison program where officers can call or FaceTime if need be at the scene. Hmm, we do have that ability now, which is something that really just came about in the last seven, eight months.
Yeah, okay. Have you, have you had opportunity to use it?
Yes, we used it at least once, that I'm aware of.
Okay.
Martha, I wasn't, you know, because we're being, I don't want to seem like I'm, I'm attacking back at all, I think it's a great idea, I just, you, we have to figure out how we would address that particular issue.
You know, my thought that this is something that, you know, should be, you know, maybe put in that identifying issues box for later on, and, and then we come back to and discuss more, and then
We We can't be the only community that, that is, you know, that is facing
They used to have crisis intervention teams for the county?
Right, yeah.
They haven't had them.
If, if you look at page 12 through, uh, 13, 14 of the, of this manual, it talks about places in this country and Europe, as I mentioned earlier, that are using these programs, but they're instituted at a county level, I think that's how it has to be done. And, and the call, when it comes in, the 911, uh, operator has to reroute the call. And you'll have the right people to show up for, for something that the police should not be involved in. I mean, it's laid out, it looks like Oregon is doing it, it looks like Denver and Austin is doing it. It looks like they're doing it in Sweden, uh, I mean, It looks like they're doing it in Sweden's. I mean, you know, we wouldn't be reinventing the wheel. We would just, I guess, need to get the resources at a higher level because this is happening everywhere. It, Westchester County is not, it's not a crime-ridden county. We have other issues. Like I said earlier, cyberbullying, domestic violence, perhaps, mental health issues. I know of one case right now in this town where someone is mentally ill and he keeps being rearrested and he keeps doing the same thing over and over again because he's not a criminal. He has a mental illness. So, um, yeah.
This, this, I'm sorry.
I, I'm sorry. Carlos, what you're talking about is being done nowhere in Westchester County, to my knowledge. It's, it would be a great idea.
No, no, I'm not saying, I'm not saying it's done. I'm just saying it's, it needs to be done.
Yeah.
Done. I'm saying. Someone at the county level could institute. Our county could, could, could benefit from it.
There's, there's two problems that I see. I mean, I think it's a great idea to have social workers respond to people in potential mental health situations. But the first problem is the rapidity of the response. The police are there almost immediately, you know, within a minute or two. Are you gonna be able to have the non-police professional respond that quickly?
Yeah, I, I don't know.
The second issue is liability and you probably know more about that than I do.
Liability is always a problem.
My thought would be that, you know, they both respond, you know, we may get there first and try to, you know, calm the situation down and wait for the mental health professional to follow up or get there after.
Yeah, and, and in most cases, like in, in the, in the times I've had to intervene and police have been involved, this is back in, I was, I was running a school for emotionally disturbed children and the police were somehow, sometimes they got involved. Not, it wasn't a major thing. It's just, it happened. It's all about de-escalating. It was all about de-escalating. I, I wasn't diagnosing anybody. I wasn't, that's not what we do. He's just trying to calm everybody down. That's it. So that's the right, you know, because somebody who has a mental illness, who is constantly doing a behavior, I mean, you're talking about issues of, are they doing their, they maybe they're on medication, they're not taking it. The social worker responds with a cop is not gonna deal with that. The only thing they're trying to do is to calm the situation down and make sure there's no overreaction. Which is, which can be a danger. I have seen that happen, the overreaction. Because it gets out of control. I mean, the mentally ill person is out of control. And the cop is in a tough spot. They're under pressure, like, it's a bad spot to be in if you don't have the bigger perspective.
Well, I think, I know, Chief Carol, I know that was one of the priorities that you've made, de-escalation training. And I know you started that, which I think is, is really terrific. And I think it needs to be, you know, quite widespread. And I think that's probably a training that needs to go on annually if possible. Because there are always new methods and ways to deal with it, et cetera. But I mean, the conjunction, I, I understand having a countywide group that could respond to these things would probably make the most economic sense. But it could also be, but we are talking about, you know, repeated, you know, being able to respond so quickly. There's nothing to say that a countywide organization or, or group of people cannot be set up similar to the DA's office where they're in certain towns. So you have somebody who's fairly local in maybe, you know, two towns or three towns. And they're able to respond much quicker than maybe one central location, say in White Plains. So I, I think we can, you know, set that, it, it's just a matter of structure, I think, if the will is there. And the coordination with other towns who have to be dealing with the same thing. This really should go on to some type of a recommendation list with the expectation that it would ultimately be countywide with the cooperation of the various towns. Does that make sense to anybody?
It does to me.
I, I think we, you know, we all know, we all have the similar mindset with this issue. And I think we should took, put it for like, to be discussed or I, area that we've identified that we need to address. So everybody's good and then maybe I'll, I'll continue with the.
I'm sorry, Jeremy, um, how, how are we keeping track of these, these recommendations that maybe aren't exactly answers to the, to the chief's questions? So maybe they fall outside of, you know, the, you know, the reporting that the, that the chief is doing?
I, I have some notes that I've taken. We also have this recording, but this is why I suggested before that if we all sort of do a little homework, I think, I, I don't, efficiency right isn't the right word, but maybe be more productive. Is that the better way to describe it? Be more productive to share information if we all share our thoughts and write it down and collect it.
All right, well, I'm, I will be described for the day. I will, I will take.
I was over here making a Google Jam board. I was gonna show you what it is after that. What, what it does is, um, I don't know, Jeremy, can I share my screen? Is there, you're right with that?
Yeah, yeah, I don't think I'm the technical host here, so.
I did. So a Google Jam board is a way to like, collect your thoughts. So I was just kind of writing, I did, I can stop doing this. I was just trying to organize us. So I was writing down like yellow things or things that have come up to think about. Pink ones are questions and then the blue one is like a solution. So I, what I was doing is I was kind of, let me stop sharing my screen. I, I was just trying to, um, did a lot of strategic planning stuff and, and it's hard to, um, can you see my board? You can, right? Do, what we can do is I can keep doing this and then when we get to the third meeting, like we had this meeting, the next meeting, then we can get all on here, write it, organize it and then start making some, um, like identify some themes and then start trying to hit some targets. So Jill, if you want, I could share it with you. We could do it together or I could stop doing it.
Tiffany, how are you with this?
I never.
Again, boards. I feel so much better that she said that. You have no idea.
Really easy to use. It's very.
Send it to me.
We could do it together and then.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, we'll do it. It's a good idea.
Somebody's, somebody's.
Trying to identify and, you know, set some targets. Okay. I've been jamming over here for the past 25 minutes while you guys have been talking.
I've just been taking copious notes. It doesn't count.
For the record, it was very clear for the record, I told Christine to do that.
All right, I'm. And it might be the fifth meeting, the way we're going, Christine, but before we get to that. Can you commit to reduce violence more effectively by redeploying resources policing to other programs? I know violent crimes remain lower nonexistent in the town of Newcastle. So I don't know that really is an issue for us.
Can you explain what violent crimes are for people who don't know?
Yeah, burglary, robbery, rape. You know, stall, assault, you know, a high level assault, stuff like that.
And, and for the record, a domestic violence crime, it's a misdemeanor, like someone strikes a spouse. That is not necessarily a violent crime. It's a statutorily defined crime, such as a more serious assault.
Correct.
So what, somebody breaks into someone's car, that's a burglary, but that is not.
That's not a burglary. Larceny, it's, it's, yeah, it's, yeah.
What is it then? What is it?
Grand larceny.
Right, so.
I haven't watched enough cop and lawyer shows yet, you know?
Interestingly enough, for those who don't know, if someone were to strike you in the nose and even potentially break your nose, it could be a misdemeanor. But if I, I shouldn't say me, or you, someone else, if someone else went into your home and without your permission and stole something with intent to commit a crime, even if no one was hurt at all, it's a violent crime because it is a dwelling where someone resides. So there's, it's statutorily defined as a violent crime.
Who currently staffs your 911 center? Now, when calls are answered by NCPD personnel, so it's a police officer answering 911's one call. Our calls routed to law enforcement, fire EMS, yes, the, the desk office has the ability to do all those things.
Chief, does it make a difference if it's a landline call or a cell phone call where it's routed?
Nope, nope. If, if, if a landline cell phone doesn't matter. Problem is if you dial 911 on a cell phone, you get the state police. And then they have to find out what municipality handles it and that sometimes takes, takes some time.
So then it does matter. It doesn't come too directly.
Doesn't come directly. If anybody ever asks me, I say, um, program our, our, not emergency line in your phone. Because it'll come directly to us or in the community that you live in or you're going to. So.
I've been back for a minute with the 911 calls. Where, is there, going back to the example I gave where the ambulance could not have been dispatched without the involvement of the, without a police showing up on the scene? Should we be addressing this?
So who, who told you that?
Um, Martha.
And, and I was told that because I contacted one of the EMTs.
Right.
Directly because I know the person and was hoping she would tell me who was on duty and I could just call that person on duty and ask them to just drive by. And I was told by that person, no, you have to go through the Newcastle Police Department.
That's their procedure. So they're not.
They wanna have it all come through you guys.
That type of call without us.
Well, that's helpful to know. I guess I should have made some other calls before I did anything else, huh? I just went based on, I just went based on what they, they told me.
And if you got the county dispatch center that, you know, as well, and, and a call like that, they were dispatched to police also.
So chief, when, so because it's one of your officers, that an officer, civilian or officer who answers 911?
It'll be an officer.
An officer. So an officer answers 911 and this is under your supervision. So you have some discretion over how they respond. It's your training, your guidelines, or is it, or is it set? Do we have discretion?
We have discretion for sure.
So there, I mean, just to respond to Hermine's and Martha's story, perhaps there, we could look at that discretion. What is the discretion now? I don't even know what it is. Is there something that needs to be expanded in that guidance?
Uh, you know, we want to talk about, first of all, I would love to speak with the officer, you know, and, and hear his side of, of that. But yes, you know, people can suggest that officers don't respond with lights and siren. But the, the officer ultimately makes that decision and how he pulls up, whether he feels it's safer to have his lights on to protect whoever he's talking to or the person or the ability for, to people behind him to drive around or stop them. So, so, you know, it makes the scene safer. So those are all discretion issues, act the action. They base, base the bottom what the officer's ceiling, seeing deal with.
Right, I'm, I'm not necessarily that particular decision, but I think in, in general, what the guidance is for a 911 call is what they can and can't do. And maybe it's part of the other thing of like how the community interacts with the police. Like what expectations community members can have of requests about, as, as in this case, like, don't come with your lights, like, okay, but maybe not. I mean, it really depends. I mean, if he comes upon a situation, he can't get out of the car unless he stops traffic, he's gotta stop everybody. So you could understand some of his thinking because of the safety question. So it, it might not just be disregard, it might be something superseded it.
Was there a question there, Vince? I'm sorry, I, I have a.
There is, I'm just making a comment like about, no, I, I. About the discretion, about exploring it. I don't know. I'm just saying, it's just something to look at. That's all. I, I don't.
With respect to the, the discretion, I, I understand what you're saying and it makes sense. You know, if there's a safety issue or you're worried about traffic coming and, you know, other people on the side of the road. But, and, and I respect that. However, when it comes to discretion, they need to exercise it wisely. And based on the description I saw, and I'm just talking about this one instance, I'm not talking in general. But this one instance, according to Hermine, she was basically at the entrance of Orchard Road. So he could have just pulled on Orchard Road and he wouldn't have had to worry about traffic and safety issues on 117. So that's just a choice that the officer made in that particular instance. So like, you know, maybe that does need to be looked at, you know, how they respond to these really sensitive issues, you know, and it's not, I don't think this is everybody. This might, maybe this was a newer officer, who knows? It's just a matter of, of learning, you know, what kind of discretion to, to use in certain situations.
Right. And I don't know what he saw or what he was thinking, of course, without having talked to him, so.
Can I ask a question on another point, just backing up for a moment, that, the, the question you asked about, does 911 route to, to fire and, and other first responders? I'm wondering if you ever, to the sort of line of conversation we're having earlier, do you ever route to 211?
I haven't worked a desk in a while.
I'm just curious, I'm just curious if that's a protocol that people ever use.
Yeah, I don't know.
Go to.
So two, you know, 211, in Westchester, 211 is run by the United Way, but it's basically, basically a social services hotline.
Ah, I didn't realize that, okay.
And in, in New York City, I was a part of the team that worked on setting up 211. And in New York City, you can route directly to 211 for people who are having, you know, sort of social service crises as opposed to crises that are dealt with by, uh, by the police department. So I'm just curious if there's a, a procedure that we could put into place to provide that as a, as a way to route people who have social services issues.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea, Ivy. Are there other social services that should be more fully integrated into 911 call centers and the triage process? I mean, that's more of a group discussion. I really don't even have an answer for that. I, I, I'm sure there, there certainly should be, you know, maybe 211, for example. Would call takers need new training and community wanted to self-response functions towards service, social services? Yes, absolutely. We definitely need, we need additional training. Should 911 call centers be operated by law enforcement, other social services or a combination of agencies? So I mean, in theory, yes. You know, our small town, no, you know, I, I don't see it happening, but something to think about.
Well, here's where I think there's also like a little bit of a difference between, you know, a large city versus a small town, right? You know, a lot of people call your non-emergency number, you know, for the more routine issues or for, you know, 911 calls tend to be true emergencies, correct?
For the most part, yes. And we try to designate them specifically for, if it's a non-emergency call, we try to have them rerouted to a non-emergency line so we can keep the 911 lines open. Should the police department have a presence in the school? Yes. We, uh, we currently have an SRO assigned to the high school. We have five additional school resource officers in town. So it's, it's something, something anybody would like to discuss.
You're saying why you think the police should be in school?
Yeah, I'll tell you.
I feel comfortable. I drop my daughter off every morning at Greeley and I feel comfortable that there's an officer there in case anything happens.
So they're specially trained to work in an academic environment, training with counseling, handling special needs students, violence in the school, gang activity, creating drug-free schools and crisis management.
Race bias training?
What's that?
Do they go through race bias training?
Our officers do, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we, um, we don't have a single point of entry at Greeley, so we, we really need, there's like two layers of support we need. That is a, a significant layer of support that we need because of the way that our buildings are physically structured. And then, I mean, we've, we have found that, um, and again, this might not be everybody's experience. I'm only sharing the feedback that we received because we, um, that our officers have nicely integrated themselves into our systems. Like beyond their role as officers. I mean, our youth officer is a, was a coach here, so. We found it very helpful to assist with different issues that we've had. Most of them are with adults who shouldn't be on campus or providing a, a resource for students who might have a problem that they want to talk through, where there could be some kind of legal avenue that needs to be explored because they might have been the victim of something.
I also think it goes back to building relationships, you know, and, um, you know, getting close to the students and being able to feel comfortable speaking to an officer. We also have school, it's our SROs, some are assigned to an elementary school. Well, they'll go to elementary school and walk around and say hello and get to know the kids. So goes back to that whole community policing idea of community relations.
So I, just so I understand, so isn't the primary reason that there is interest in having the police at the school is we're afraid of school shootings? Correct? Is that, I mean, I just want to kind of get it out there. Is that the primary reason? Correct? Is that, I mean, I just want to kind of get it out there. Is that the primary reason?
No.
Then what are, can you be a little bit more specific about the reasons besides the school shootings, it's then?
So statistically. The chance of us having a mass shooting in our schools very small. However, we do have incidents because of the way our campus is structured, where people who don't belong there could have access to our spaces who shouldn't. And Michelle has helped support us to minimize that interaction, which was happening too often before I got on campus. I do also believe, though, and I think it is true that because of police shootings, that the overwhelming support of having Michelle be available at school was was there, where maybe it might not have been there in the past in the same way because of that heightened awareness, particularly after Parkland.
My officers have a different skill set than the principals happen have, and they have the ability to maybe see or pick up somebody in crisis ahead of time. Or I also know that they, if they build the relationship, kids will come to them and say that, hey, this person's having a problem where this is going on and that's going on. I think it's just another resource.
Do we know what the kids think?
We had us, we, before we had a um. Michelle come to to work for us, we had a student survey. And a majority of the students supported having a youth officer and staff and parents.
And how did the students of color feel about that?
We didn't delineate the survey in that way. But this was two, this was two years ago.
So it was, it was during times of police brutality if it was two years ago, because.
I don't think I could say that it wasn't, right, based on. I don't know if there would ever be a time where I could say that that didn't, right, so. Well, I could, I could resurvey students. I don't think that would change the outcome. Michelle to be a part of our school community because of that we do.
I I think it's, I think it's an important fact to try to determine how the BIPOC population does respond to that. I think that's really relevant. It may not change the overall result, but I think it's important to at least understand what the response is and how we deal with it. And move forward.
When um, this was originally brought up, um, following Sandy Hook, if I remember correctly, the first time that was mentioned, and then with each school shooting, there was new mention of a of police in the schools, et cetera. And um, so it it was definitely instigated because of school shootings. However, people learned to craft the narrative to gain greater buy in as time progressed. It was, this idea was birthed because of the school shootings. The one thing I have to, I want to add to that is that we may not have had that experience in Chappaqua as yet. But what we've seen throughout this country, whenever school resources officers abuse students, 99% of the time, it is a student of color. We've we've seen students who um. Basically was zip tied because their hands were too small for the handcuffs. We've seen students who were slammed to the floor by school safety officers in other schools. And um, basically, those tend to be students of color. When I see a police officer in the school, I feel terrified. And Christina, with all due respect, you mentioned feeling comfortable that the police would be able to deal with emotional threats in the school. We're talking emotional threats, you're probably, I interpreted that to mean students with a mental health crisis. Is is that what you meant?
No, I don't, I don't know if I used the word emotional threats. If I did, then that was not, I misspoke because we have our, we have a counseling team that works through that. It's when students make physical threats of harm.
I see.
That that might compromise the school community. That's when we we partner with the police. But that's not just at Greeley, that's at the middle schools as well. There's certain incidents where we have the youth officer get involved based on the nature of what has happened, which is in line with Project Save legislation.
Got it. All to say, when I, I I I support what Kimberly says, let's survey the students to see do they really feel safer? We see what ha, we saw what happened in Parkland. The police officer was not of service. He turned and ran during the the school massacre. So um, you know, once again, what might be a lend of feeling of safety to one population might make some other students very uncomfortable and maybe not foster a great learning environment. It's just something to consider.
I'll put, I'll put it on the jam board. I don't know, I don't know if we'll do it, but let's put all the suggestions up there. And then we can think about it as we start to craft what we think we're going to do moving forward. I will say, though, to survey our kids on an issue, that's a process that is beyond the scope of this committee, but that's not, that doesn't mean that I can't take that recommendation form forward and process it with the team that would actually ultimately make that decision. So.
Well, I think ultimately we're making suggestions for the state, right? So it's um, we're, we're, we're following the governor's mandate. So, yeah, let's um, document it.
So we're hitting up on eight o'clock. I guess we were productive in that we didn't get to where we thought we would go. We didn't get to number two.
You know, I I think I could probably get through next session really quickly, and then maybe we would get through section one overall, and we can do next section two next time. Everybody has a few more minutes?
I'm I'm fine if it wants to stay, I mean.
Okay. Staffing, budgeting, equipping your police department. I could just review our staffing, talk about it real quick, and then if there's some criticisms that come up, we can talk about it. So again, what's the staffing needs? Newcastle Police is an accredited agency currently comprised of 38 sworn officers. The chief, two lieutenants, detective sergeant, two detectives, a detective slash youth officer, nine patrol sergeants, 22 police officers. Officer staff, three tours of duty every day, and Detective Division handles criminal investigations. And the question is, should components be civil civilianized? And we currently have 17 civilian employees. Full time civilian staff includes one senior office assistant, a community service worker, an animal warrant slash parking enforcement officer. The part time employers include one officer assistant, four parking enforcement officers, two school crossing guards, and six court attendants. The next question is, should the police department be demilitarized? You know, we are not militarized, you know, as they come up before. We did get a Humvee from the military, but that's used for major storms and the ability for us to get around town. Such as Sandy, something like that. And then the last one, it said, you know, how should the police engage in crowd control? And, you know, we support the ability of citizens to exercise their First Amendment rights of freedom and freedom to assembly. We have reaffirmed that support this past year by safely protesting several rallies and protests within town. A department has contacted organizers and stressed the importance of peaceful assembly and work to help them run a peaceful protest or rally. So that's the staffing, budgeting, and equipping your police department section. Is there any questions on that?
Chief, is it possible for you to take and maybe circulate the answers to part one and perhaps part two for for next time so that everybody has an opportunity to to go through them? Especially with with the staffing, there might be some questions, but I think it's probably easier for people to actually take a look at the the listing. I mean, you know, Rob, I, you, we're sort of familiar with the numbers. We we work with them all the time. But I think for those people that aren't familiar with the way the police department works and how, you know, you always have to have a certain number of people on seven days a week, 24 hours a day, and what that looks like and how few officers are actually on at any one point in time.
All right, well, then don't judge because these are my notes.
Okay, all right. Well, do you want, you want to make them pretty? You can make them pretty.
Pretty already, but.
Maybe you can use a jam board, make it spruce it up a little bit.
Oh, she has really set the bar tremendously high.
We should do, I will share the GM board maybe with everybody. And then we can think about what we heard and then add to it before the next session, if that's okay. I don't. So I can, I can share it with the group.
Good idea.
I just don't know. I mean, every second I have the skill set to actually add to the jam board at this point.
I'll show you, I'll show you right now. Let me show you. This is so.
It's really good.
Okay, listen, here's the board. All you have to do to add something is just click on the sticky note. That's it. And you type it and it goes up there. I can write some little directions on there, too, for people in the email. But I, yellow was things that we need to think about, blue was things that we take advantage of in the opportunity, and pink are potential next steps. So for example, I, a question would be, do we need to analyze how officers respond to sensitive issues? A pick next, a pink note for a next step would be, do we need to survey the BIPOC students regarding the SRO at Greeley? And then the blue would be like the liaison program with the hospital. I just tell, I think it's helpful if we put things down on paper and then and we because the discussion's good and then we memorialize it somewhere and then we can keep moving and then sticky notes can be moved around. And it'll just help, I think, organize like next steps for us.
I think that's a terrific idea. Thank you so much for doing that.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
Uh, so that's section one. Nice job, everybody. At least we got through one. So. I will, I will circulate section one and section two the next couple of days. And then next Thursday, I guess we'll just go through section two. And try to get through that. I mean, we could try to, we'll see if we can go further, we can go further, but let's uh.
I don't want to. You want to put down two and three, and that way people, you know, if there are things they want to talk about.
All right, well. I have two done. All three will be done for for next week.
Okay.
So thank you everyone for your patience, and this is a work in progress. I appreciate everyone being tolerant of as we're trying to figure out how the best way to communicate this all together. So anything anyone wants to share before we finish up for the night?
I think this was fantastic.
Thank you, everybody.
And thank you for the opportunity to join. I really appreciate being here.
Thank you for joining.
Thanks for making the time.
Yes.
So appreciate it.
And feel free to submit anything, anything in advance if you want to, you know, something that's on your mind or a mission, that'd be very helpful.
Take care. Stay safe.
Great. Thank you. Good night.
Good night.
Have a good night.